We've been doing this internally for a couple of weeks now and it's been a huge success. And so I'm not sure if you guys had the chance to look at the study guide yet that I sent over to you? Anyone?
Yes.
Okay, cool, awesome. So what I wanted to open up first was with any questions that you guys may have, because I know that I I've talked to you guys, a lot of partners, you know, people here. But did you guys have any like questions that you wanted to bring up? So it could kind of drive the study session and drive what we wanted to focus on?
Yeah, Dennis here. Thanks, I see. I think that's great. I've got a few topics as well, but also from managed solution, one of our strategic account executives and come from a Microsoft background for like the last four years and we want to make this very kind of like round robin, organic. So any things top of mind that you guys are coming across with your clients, any maybe like Microsoft language or things that you guys are seeing? We'd love to kind of address those and see how we can kind of start off from there. And if not, we can kind of just fall back on the study guide as well, but wanting to make sure that we can at least address some of these ideas or topics that maybe you guys are seeing out there with your clients as well.
Well, I'm definitely looking forward to to seeing how we can tap into the Azure market and how the Microsoft licenses really connects to the Azure and the value proposition. So I'm really looking forward to that part.
Yeah, awesome. And I know, James, I think you were the one who emailed me about some specific questions that you had. You're the one who's had a ton of conversations about with with customers about Microsoft. And we want this to also be a session where we give you guys the information and the right questions to ask your customer. Or I mean, really anyone and how you can figure out what a solution is when it comes to Microsoft or what the problem is and how to uncover those rather than just passing them over to us. You know, because we are the experts, we do have a lot of experience when it comes to Microsoft. But we want to make sure that you guys are comfortable and armed with with that knowledge too. So you can bring over the right deals or you know the right questions to ask, because as the world is changing and growing and completely different than what it was, we're seeing a lot of people needing more information on Microsoft. So I did want to introduce quickly Seth. He's also a strategic account manager here at managed solutions. So Seth, if you want to quickly say hi.
Yeah, thanks, Estee. Thanks for setting this up to we've like as he said, we've we did this internally. We've got a lot of use out of it. It's nice to do this collaboratively, get some feedback, share what we're seeing out in the field. Like to Dennis's point as well. So I work alongside with Dennis. We work directly with customers. We partner with you. We work alongside SD. So generally, I'm also curious what you guys are seeing. If you're seeing a lot more probably maybe teams is probably coming up a lot. Maybe stuff is, you know, a lot of your customers are inquiring about migrating to SharePoint or OneDrive. We'd love to hear your feedback, what you're seeing out in the field and how we could tie this into what we're learning here today.
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody wants to take a stab at it first. I did hear from James licensing. Was there any other topics that you guys are seeing with your clients? Is it, you know, Azure or modern workplace says that pertains to Office 365 SharePoint or Teams or anything specific outside of the licensing?
All right, well, we can we can start going through the study guide if you want. I'm trying to add study guide to the actual chat, but I can't can't figure out some way. Okay. Hey, Josh, you talked about virtual desktops. Okay, awesome. So I'll just start off with the study guide and again, managed solution team just hop in when when you want to, because I know this I know this information pretty well. But again, when it comes to connecting it with specific deals that you guys have worked on and how we can help the partners ask the right questions, you guys are definitely the right people to ask, but I'll just go ahead and start going through the study guide. And that will talk that this is actually about Azure. So what what platform as a service is and what infrastructure as a service is within Azure or within Microsoft that is Azure essentially. So starting off with infrastructure as a service, it's the most basic category of cloud computing. So that's where you rent IT infrastructure, servers, virtual machines, storage networks, operating systems, and you rent that essentially through us. We get that through Microsoft and it's a pay as you go basis. So that is like a good basic description of what Azure is again, at the most, it's the most basic category of cloud computing. So does that make sense? Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Um, and then platform as a service. So this is where I might need a little help from either Dennis or Seth. So platform as a service is the second level and it refers to the cloud computing service that supplies an on demand environment for developing, testing, delivering and manage managing software as a service. So that's another aspect of Azure that can be used and bought through Microsoft.
Does everybody familiar with these concepts?
So what would be an example of platform as a service? Would that be Salesforce?
Salesforce would be more software as a service. You know, we haven't touched on that. But Salesforce.
But the background to build, but the background to build a Salesforce or build an environment, would that be the platform as a service?
To build apps on Salesforce.
Like to like to build to to build a, you know, a CRM. I guess the the Salesforce or CRM would be on the other side of that. But if someone is developing a platform so we can consume a CRM, would that be what platform as a service would be?
With Salesforce, I can't I can't confirm whether or not that is exactly what it's used for, but that's the that's the idea that it's it's a way for you to develop and build without without having to separately get, you know, infrastructure as a service. That makes sense. So I don't know specifically with Salesforce, to be honest, because I'm not an expert with them.
Yeah, and let me know if this helps. Share like explain a little bit more for you, James, or whoever asked that. So plot platform as a service is essentially, it requires like the least less management from like clients internal IT to upkeep to kind of maintain and everything. It's almost kind of like you'd mentioned, if you have Salesforce, you can kind of try to put that software into that PaaS solution where you're not having to maintain as much infrastructure as if you were having to say run IAS, which is infrastructure as a service, right? So your internal team is kind of maintaining the upkeep, the servers, the the updates, the patching and all that. So platform as a services kind of requires and makes it a little bit easier. So you don't have to do as much management or internal maintenance from your IT team as well.
Can you ask me?
Oh, I'm not sure who spoke there. I did see Sean.
Yeah, Sean. I hey, I could throw you one more explanation for a platform as a service if that was the question. Yeah. So simply put, think about every single platform runs on a database sequel typically or some Oracle or other. So any company like Salesforce, they have their own cloud. The platform is running on their database. So you have to think about the layers. You have your application Salesforce, your database sequel or Oracle or whatever. And then your cloud provider or private cloud. So even if Salesforce ran an Amazon on a sequel database or AWS on a sequel database running Salesforce. You know, the traditional concept of platform as a service is they provide the platform for the application service sitting on top of it like Salesforce.
Awesome, Sean. Yeah, that's exactly what you you asked, James. So I believe so. So thank you, Sean. That's that was awesome. And by the way, this is Sean Farrell. He's the CEO of Managed Solutions. He just kind of hopped in and stuck on. So thank you for being here, Sean.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So do you guys have any other questions about platform as a service or infrastructure as a service?
So would the IS be like the computing part of it, you know, the the storage, the the CPU? Just the basic components of a computer, but instead of that computer, that that supercomputer being in a closet, it's actually in the cloud. You can see it in the cloud.
Yeah, that's exactly it. There's there's levels to it. What was that?
RAM, CPU, storage. Spinning it up, elasticity up and down in the cloud.
Correct. Yeah. And in in Microsoft, that's that's all done within Azure. So Azure is where it's pretty much like a data database, but it's it's in the cloud. And and that's where people are charged as on a pay you go as pay as you go basis. So it's it's hard to explain Azure. I feel like sometimes it's it's hard for me to explain Azure sometimes, but the infrastructure and as a service and platform as a service are all within Azure through Microsoft.
So it's pretty cheap to to put that stuff in the cloud, but it gets pretty cost prohibitive to pull that stuff out, correct?
No.
Azure.
Well, so just like you just said, that was you, James, it's the operating system, Windows, which is you're going to choose two platforms or I don't want to use the word platform here. We're going to choose two operating systems in the cloud, Linux or Windows. And all of the cloud providers, including Microsoft Azure, run them. And behind that is like you said, RAM CPU storage. That's it. And so that's infrastructure as a service. When you start adding the database and or the application, that's when you move to platform and or, you know, sort of some companies might refer to it as software as a service. But cost prohibitive, no, the biggest misnomer in the cloud space is the fact that you're moving your company's platform or data, probably even take it more granular, you're moving data from something, say Salesforce to the cloud. And most organizations unfortunately just don't know how to parse and really put the data in the right. And I'm going to call it, you know, areas of the cloud. I don't even want to call it a warehouse, but the right places, whether it be cold storage, highly available storage into an infrastructure like a server with an operating system on it. People really don't. They do like a lift and shift a lot of the time, which is never a good way to do it because costs can run up on them pretty quick.
Posted I posted in the chat. I don't know if everybody, sorry, this is Chris Newell, new to managed solutions, not new to Microsoft. A million years. I did post in the chat a good kind of diagram that that outlines what the four buckets are that, you know, this whole infrastructure as a service, platform as a service, software as a service and on premise, and it kind of helps. I don't know if everyone can see it. If not, I'll be happy to share my screen. I can actually show it on my screen, but it gives a good outline of how you can look at this. And anything in green is basically things that you or your customer manages. And anything in orange is what sits on, say, we're using Azure. So it would sit within the Azure infrastructure and is managed by either Microsoft or if you're a service provider that's providing these services to your customers would be managed by the service provider. So you can kind of take a look and see in an infrastructure as a service, basically Azure is hosting all of the virtualizations, the server, the storage, we talked about the RAM, the networking. The customer is what is they put on top of that, you know, they they control the the OS, what patches they get, you know, they're controlling the data that's on that box as well as any applications, meaning they install it, they support it. You know, then you move to a platform as a service. And again, platform as a service and software as a service is a is a fine line there. They get kind of convoluted a lot, but realistically, you're just adding more things to Azure so that Azure is responsible for. So in this case now, platform as a service, Azure is responsible for the OS. So you probably purchase an OS off the marketplace and things of that nature. Now you are or your customer is only responsible for the applications and the data that resides on on those services. And then again, if you move to software as a service, then everything's controlled by someone else, whether it be Azure, you know, you mentioned Salesforce. Salesforce really is a software as a service platform unless you are hosting or the customer is hosting their own instance of Salesforce on a virtual machine. And then then you start getting into a platform or infrastructure. So it's a they're great little things to use to even talk about this to customers as well, so they can understand. Hey, what is an infrastructure as a service versus software versus everything's on premise? So it's a pretty cool little document. You can just, and you can search the web for images and pull up the same one. That's just where I grabbed that from.
That's awesome, Chris. Thank you for bringing this to the table. This is I feel like these diagrams and these graphs are so helpful, not only for like us to learn, but also like you said, to show the customers. So this is great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's awesome. And you said you did you work at Microsoft before?
No, I've worked for other CSPs. I've been doing doing Microsoft for, oh goodness, I don't know, 20 years, 30 years or something.
Awesome.
But no, I have worked for other, you know, good new new to managed solutions, but I've worked for many, many other CSPs doing exactly this, going out, talking to customers about not only the infrastructure side, but the Office 365 side and, you know, how they can take advantage of it.
Awesome. Well, thank you for for being here. Do you have any, did you have any questions? I know that you know so much about what we're presenting on, but I didn't know if you were interested in learning something specific. If there's anything that you, you know, came across recently that you wanted to ask us about, or if you're just here just to
I'm here to meet everybody because I get them new and so I don't really know everyone yet. And it's, you know, there's lots to learn. So yeah, I don't have any questions yet though. So.
Okay, cool.
So Estee, are you guys going to be getting into express route or direct connect in this session? Is this part of this?
Well, that's a good question. I I personally don't know much about that, but we can get into it because I know Sean's here. So if he wants to talk about that. We wanted to make sure that we opened up the floor to you guys. So you have specific questions, we can answer them as much as possible. But again, I my level of knowledge goes to here, I'd say in the whole you know, aspect of Microsoft. So Sean, is that something that you could answer for James?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about it as we go through this and the connections back into Microsoft are actually since through a private cloud into Microsoft.
Sorry, you're breaking up.
Happy to talk about it.
Okay, sorry, you broke up a little bit right there. Sean.
We cut the part that he said at the end, he's happy to talk about it.
Okay.
We lost him.
Sean's always on the go. So sometimes you hear him, sometimes you don't. I think you got the gist.
More people are coming in right now. Okay, so I actually saw some questions. The first one was the, oh, hey, Sean. So we can, Tom, it looks like you want to talk about MFA implementation. We have Josh Lawless. Hi, Josh. It's good to see you here. The Azure virtual desktop. So I don't know the best way to approach this. Sean, did you want to talk? Did you want to talk about what James was just asking you about?
Yeah, sure. We can go down the list. Let's let's just roll through some of the questions that come up first. MFA, if we could start there, is that a good topic that we go to WBD? Okay, so MFA, it is a big there's a big mystery behind it right now. Everybody just traditionally thinks about it as, you know, something I have, something I know, password and a cell phone, password and a fingerprint, password and I guess an eye scan or something like that, or a code that gets sent to my authenticator app. When we have like, you know, Google's authenticator app, you know, you get that. Did you try to sign in? Yes. What's your number? You know, 59 and we're into our Google finance, let's say, for example. So the difference in MFAs out there that I think everybody has to be aware of is both the authentication methods that you can choose for your company. And so with Microsoft MFA for Office 365, and let me start with that. There is two Microsoft MFA platforms. You know, first your users and or your business has to choose how they want to authenticate. Is it that code that gets sent to the phone via taxes? Is it that code that comes through that authenticator app on your phone that gives you a, you know, a couple digit password? Is it a fingerprint scan? Is it a phone call to your phone? All that good stuff. So Microsoft MFA is included in your traditional Office 365 suite of products for I'm going to call it the end user device for authentication in. And then what I guess what you we all have to think about out there is, and I hope this, you know, today, I know today's a study group, but what are we really trying to protect against? And it's really access to our applications. And so when you start thinking about Azure or Microsoft MFA, what Microsoft has thought through is really if I'm going to log into Teams or I'm going to log into Salesforce because I'm hooked into Microsoft with that single sign on capability. You know, one username and password, I want to make sure my identity, I don't want to confuse anybody, when it goes to login to Teams or Salesforce and I go to a Starbucks down the street or a subway, it recognizes at that point that I'm trying to log into X platform or application software as a service, and then it's going to ask me to re-authenticate in with MFA. So there's actually two different types that are out there via Microsoft, just to be clear. But I hope that sort of, maybe that was a little too deep, but I hope that answers some of the question.
Yeah, thank you.
We also want to confuse MFA with conditional access rules as well. And that's, I only say that because Sean, you talked about how would you go into Starbucks? So there's a way to control someone accessing that corporate data from different locations and then we can, you know, we can force MFA in these locations. We can, we can have a customer. We can tell a customer, well, you know, we know sometimes MFA is, you know, is a pain. No one likes to always be getting those challenges on their phone. Well, we can set it up so that way you're only getting MFA in locations that are considered untrusted locations. If they're on your corporate network, they don't have to do MFA if you if you so choose to. But if they are outside your corporate network, whether it be a home network, a public network like Starbucks, we can set up conditional access policies that that say if this IP address is unknown or it's an untrusted IP address, we can force MFA to happen on those devices. And that's great. So that way customers feel like, you know, when their users are away from their office, which today we seem to be a lot of, right? Then they know that they're getting that second level or of, you know, authentication. So it's important that we you know, we we let them know that we can control that, you know, via these conditional access policies that we can set up for them.
Sure. Yeah, the what to what Chris just said, everyone, you know, the the idea of what happens behind the scenes and how our companies govern, you know, our access, how data gets moved in and out of the company. There's a whole nother slew of conversations around security for the user and the data we move around the world that has to do with these policies, conditional access and some others. So he's 100% right. So there's, when people say I've implemented MFA, just know that you know, they may have not done it well and specific to their organization and or their compliance requirements. So it is a it is a can of worms that needs to get unwound with most customers. Go ahead.
So I have a quick question. So is SSO single sign on part of that MFA discussion, is it interchangeable to MFA? And why is MFA and single sign on such a big deal? What is what is causing businesses to be more interested in that?
Yep. So think about it's pretty simple. I'll try to keep it in simple form for today. Every time somebody hires somebody in their business, they get a digital identity created for them, an identity that's usually put under the what's called ASG, or sorry, active directory. We always joke, it's kind of the, it's like God in the business. Estee gets hired, she comes on, we put her into AD, Estee gets joined to what's called an organizational unit, just like it sounds in my in managed solutions. She gets put into a certain set of groups and we set up group policies for her. So if you think about it just from the human lens, active directors where everything comes in. Sometimes it comes in through human resources and then it's tied to active director if we have a new hire. But then from there, what do we do? We all go out to our applications, Salesforce and our electronic health record app and our Office 365. And that's where companies are trying to consolidate and take that identity, create the single sign on capability through one username and password. And then like Chris and everybody's talked about all these security parameters behind that MFA and be able to authenticate or that app, I should say, that application itself knows that that person coming in is an authentic user. Otherwise, you have the old way of doing things, which is I've got an individual username for Salesforce and password. I've got an individual one. So you just lose. You just create more complexity in your world and you lose control of the, I'll call it the global identity. So, you know, of your employee. So that's why single sign on is so important. So it's ease of use, it's security. It's just a big thing that's been going on for about four or five years, well, probably longer than that, 10 years now. And there's several different flavors of SSO. There's, you know, Microsoft's Active Directory Federation Services or ADS, ADFS or Azure AD, which is basically active directory in the cloud, talking to active directory back on premise in some cases. So like, you know, again, they're in tune with one another. And then there's Okta. There's one login. There's another one in the education space called Ping you might hear about. So all of them, and to answer your question, James, regardless of the mobile device tools, the MFA tools, they all can be integrated together. Considering they have sort of a baseline of what's called SAML 2.0 enablement. So if it could be a lot of tools working together with multiple, I'll just call it vendor SSO solutions, but it's very important to an organization's security. All right. You said Windows virtual desktop. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So is there a lot of opportunity for us as agents to to really to to tap that market of MFA as a consultant? Or do you feel like that is close to saturation?
No, it's not. It's in what Chris said it well. And James, it's definitely a bigger picture conversation. You know, companies are moving to the cloud, they're implementing a new app, platform, software as a service. They're trying to integrate tools, maybe connect in tools. And what what the conversation ends up coming back to is how healthy is your identity and access management component in your organization? Active Directory, how well is that set up? How well is your access for employees into these apps going to work? And more often than not, what's happening every time we go into a customer is we find that AD and their whole identity structure not being well built. So we have to unwind that whole thing for them. So as an example, let's use SharePoint as a software as a service, platform as a service, whatever we want to call it for today, in the cloud. For SharePoint to operate correctly and for all those sales and marketing teams and operations teams and finance teams to really be given the right levels of access, it all ties back to how active directory works in conjunction with single sign on capability all the way into what kind of files and folders and, you know, access that user is going to be given. So it's a huge topic right now because it's really messy. So we end up doing more discovery on the front end these days than we ever did 10 years ago. So there's a whole bunch of work to be done there.
I could just add in Sean to what Sean's saying as well is I don't think the market is saturated saturated at all. And to be honest, we're at the, we're so non saturated just because of the world we live in right now. And, you know, I'd like to call it post COVID, but we're not really post yet. We're almost there, right? So many companies today are working remotely. So many companies have people that are not in the office anymore. And because of that, so many companies are looking for better ways to to secure both their corporate data and their corporate entities, their devices or whatnot. All these things that are now were traditionally, excuse me, inside the office for these last, you know, 50 years or whatnot, or now we now find them sitting in people's homes. We now find them again, sitting in public places. So single sign on, MFA, a good in tune implementation, a good device management solution. These are all things that are 100%, you know, hot topics right now with our customers. Those are big hot bullet points to bring up to them that, hey, there's ways that we can secure all these devices that are no longer, you know, under your on premise umbrella. You know, they're now out there scattered amongst the world and we can do that for you. And those are big, big topics. So yeah, that's totally not saturated.
Thank you.
Awesome. And then Windows virtual desktop, was that another big topic that I think was quite, so let's uh, let's unwind the VDI desktop as a service, that 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 acronym that everybody uses, remote desktop services for just a sec. So virtual desktops are just like what they sound to be, you know, from hard drive less computers, which are going to be virtual anyway, everything's going to run some in some cloud somewhere, some data center. But really, when you think about the Citrix's that you guys know of all But really, when you think about the Citrix's that you guys know of old and, um, you know, other platforms that provide sort of that virtual desktop infrastructure, it's all the pro, not so much the processing, you know, CPU and hard drive and all that space, but all the application itself that you're accessing is accessed in the cloud. And so, you know, Windows Virtual Desktop is essentially, and I've heard this a lot in the, in the space, Desktop as a Service from Microsoft. So that is an option for companies. And the reason they go down those roads are many. Uh, security, of course, because you're doing less on the device than you would in the cloud. Performance at times, you know, you might want to have a, you know, a very lightweight device, if you will, or a thin client working on the other side. But, um, I, I'd say, and again, I want to be careful not to promote Microsoft today too much. But if you really look at what's happened, so much governance, I'll use the word governance as security, so much application deployment, you know, how we get access to an app, so much control. What you talked about single sign-on, James, so much of Active Directory, how we identify with people. So much of that is done inside the cloud now with Azure and Amazon and blah, 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 that having a Windows Virtual Desktop accessing most of my applications through the Azure Cloud is a very efficient way to do things and it makes management from an IT perspective a ton easier. So it is in essence, like everything else, a virtual desktop that's being really powered by the cloud. That is, let's say in this case, Azure.
So you're talking about the MFA and SSO, and I don't want you to get too much in the weeds with this particular question, but is there a, is there a zero trust component? Because things are evolving, there's always zero day threats occurring. What kind of threat is there to this, um, MFA environment? And how do you address the, the constant threat?
Well, MFA is not going to solve necessarily for that alone is the best answer I can give you right now, James. Um, I think we talked a little bit about, you know, there's, there's so much, and I'm just going to use common nomenclature for, for things that we're all learning about in security today, like advanced threats or information protection. Like I don't want to document with, you know, social security numbers or financial, you know, fintech information or financial information going out, so I want to have that watermarked. Or rights management, you know, how a document can be sent from you to I or you to me, but I can, can't forward it on to somebody else. Or BitLocker, um, which talks about, you know, I can't download stuff onto my, from my laptop, even though it's on my computer, out to a USB stick or, I mean, all of those things come in sort of behind, um, all the way down to the IoT device to create that zero trust environment. So it's not a, it's a great question, but MFA is just a component of that, um, access or zero trust. And then that's, that's a really high-end or big answer for today, but we can get more into it. But that's, that's just a component thereof.
Okay, thanks.
It's a great question, though. Um, WVD, so we're good there.
Yeah, it looks like, James, you had another question, um, about Intune, MDM. Unless we, we kind of went over, but also you want to talk about, um, E3 and E5 licenses?
Yeah, because there's part of your study that talks about, um, you know, the Office 365 stack. So I just want to make sure that that gets uncovered at some point.
Yep. The only thing I would say about Intune for today's conversation is, um, you know, we're all used to that MDM, Mobile Device Management, was the name of choice for a lot of years. We have to protect our mobile devices. Microsoft got away from that theory with, you know, it's enterprise device management is what Intune is meant to be. And I'm not a football player, but if I was, this is always my analogy, I get people, um, you know, Intune is like the receiver on a football team. Once installed on a mobile device, and by the way, there's other ones, as you guys know, there's AirWatch and there's Mast360 and there's, um, Apple, uh, JEMF and, yeah, we use them all. It's a great, yeah, and Apple Business Manager. And there's so much even to like enterprise device management, for example, to really have control over an enterprise mobile or laptop or some device in a lot of cases, and have the authority to control it through the quote-unquote "cloud" or the data center. A lot of the times you have to wipe those devices, which seems counterintuitive to, you know, a CEO who brought their iPhone in and now they're here and have to start over. But even MDM tools like Intune, people have not deployed them all that well. But the point is, what I would say back to the receiver conversation is Intune is a place where, yes, we can receive applications. Think about our future where, you know, our applications push down to our device and Intune's the receiver and really where that application deployment's happening is in the cloud. It's where policy gets pushed, you know, security policy around that enterprise mobile device. Doesn't have to be a, a cellphone. So that's really what Intune's there to do. Of course, we have those capabilities, like we all know, wipe devices, um, remove access for users, that kind of thing. But, um, that's another great conversation where, you know, what access or what control do I have over that user's device that's managed by my organization versus, you know, they have Spotify and that's theirs to use, so we can't touch that. Things like that. So, but it is the MDM or Enterprise Device Management Tool, which is part of the EMS suite for Microsoft Enterprise Management and Security. It's also part of your Office 365 suite. A lot of people didn't know that. And you get components of Intune built. M365.
Yeah.
And formerly Office 365 E3. There is components of Intune built into it as well.
I don't know if you guys want to, but at a later date, I'll, that's exactly what I do. So I'd be more than happy to give a, you know, a presentation, you know, on not, not Intune itself, but on, on how we can, you know, again, the sales around Intune, you know, you know, talking points, what can it do? Things of that nature, if we want to volunteer that to the group someday down the road. We want to have one of those as one of our breakout sessions.
Sure. It's a, it's a big play right now. All right. Um, anything else, Estee?
Um, I think, well, just looking at the questions, um, did you have any specifics on the E3 or E5 licenses? James?
No, there's just a, I guess what I'm seeing is that, um, a lot of people are paying for the E3 and E5 licenses and they're not necessarily utilizing everything that it has to offer. They might be, you know, using SharePoint, they might be using all of these other, you know, different, you know, applications. But, you know, some of these more advanced licenses are, are just being underutilized, right? So I just want to understand, you know, the different aspect of these different licenses so they can be good talking tracks. So, you know, it can, one, create credibility. Number two, drive more revenue in business.
Sure. Um, again, and this is where I think we have to start today with high level, but, um, you know, so, E, so first of all, there's, we all agree, we've shifted from Office 365 to Microsoft 365, or at least that's what, um, Microsoft has pushed us to do. So Office 365, to think about it in the old days, it was really your productivity suite of products. Office, SharePoint, Teams, Skype at the time, things like that. Microsoft 365, forget about E3, E5 for just a moment, was really their push towards adding in their security suite of tools, adding in, um, you know, Windows 10, believe it or not, the operating system, so you can deploy it to your devices rather than, you know, doing it a different way. Um, and really control it potentially through the Azure Cloud. But E3 and E5 or Microsoft 365 E3, E5. E3 or Microsoft 365 E3 is all your productivity tools, SharePoint, Teams, OneDrive. I mean, there's a million of them in there, Office, um, EMS, so their security suite of tools, that's all in Office 365, or sorry, Microsoft 365 E3. Microsoft 365 E5 is basically, and I'm, and there's some more security within that as well. E-discovery and litigation hold and some really unique compliance tools. And it includes, of course, Teams with Voice. But James, you just asked, I mean, the, the real question, and we do this all the time for customers, is like, what are they actually using in that suite of both products, frankly? And sometimes they're not using a lot of it. So why not really dive in and look at what we call the active usage in these accounts by user? And just say, hey, we want to frankly downgrade you to a, a different one. And then not, I'll throw one more monkey wrench in there for you guys. If you're 300 seats or less as a customer, you have what's called the Microsoft Business Skews. So there's Business Basic, Business Premium, um, which are built basically like Microsoft 365 E3 for the small business to get all the tools in there for, I think it's like $21, $22 a month. So there's a whole different skewed model for the SMB.
Yeah. Thanks for, for saying that, Sean. I was just about to chime in with that, too. To your point, James, like we've seen clients that are on these E3s or E5s, which are supposed to be, you know, E3, Enterprise E3, um, are 300 seats and above. But we've had clients that are, you know, 60, 70, sub-100 users in these E3s or E5s that, you know, they could benefit more from what Sean was saying, the SMB skews, which are the, the business premium or the business standard, which offer, uh, the same services as an E5, but, um, at a, a different rate as well.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, James. All right. I feel like we've covered a lot, but we wanted to go over just the questions. In the study guide, what I did want to talk about, and I'm sure that you guys have some questions regarding it, is, and I feel like working in the channel and working with partners and working directly with customers, you know, through partners. I've seen a lot of, you know, a lot of people moving to the cloud and, um, a lot of unknown around that. A lot of unknown of why people would move to the cloud and, and if it's beneficial and so on and so forth. So what, a big reason why we study, we started this study session was because, well, number one, because I, you know, I failed the test a couple of years ago and I wanted to retake it and, and pass it. But, um, we wanted to inform the partners as to why people are moving to the cloud and why they want to move to the cloud. So do you guys have any, have you guys come across any deals or customers that are hesitant about moving to the cloud? Or are they all pretty like on board with that?
I think I've seen a lot of people that are looking to move towards it. But I think I find, in my case, I find a lot of the, the hesitation comes from organizations that are a lot more, say, security-minded, like your hospitals, your banks, your, you know, financial institutes. They do still eventually move. Um, because I honestly feel that you get, you can get a lot more security when you move to the cloud if it's configured correctly than you actually can with your on-premise resources that, you know, cost boat, boatloads to implement yourself and then support with an IT task, uh, you know, an IT staff. So I think after the conversations I had with them, they do understand the value and they do eventually move. But I definitely see hesitations across, again, financial, healthcare, things that they tend to be a lot more security-focused, but we still get them there. That's, you know.
Uh, hey, Leanne, I know that you were trying to say something. I don't know if you, um, had a question or comment. And thank you, Chris.
Yeah. No, I was there, I, answering the question of which is the same, what, what Chris was saying, which is, but not as detailed. But yeah, I have customers that don't want to move just because they like the idea of having their server sitting in the room next to them.
Yeah. Yeah. I love the way you spell your name, by the way, Leanne. If it is LIA, I mean, that's very cool. Um, no, what I, I, what I, I'll just, again, going through this for like 20, 15 years now with this whole cloud thingy. So I'm kind of beyond the point of it's a cost comparison, Delio. I, I just don't agree with it anymore. If a customer is, you know, give me a quote, like-for-like, here's what I have, here's what I need. You know, we just, we're not the right fit. Um, we're trying to look at companies from a strategic perspective. So somebody brought James or Chris. Companies are really going to struggle in the future with all these, um, with, with data. They're, they're trying to figure out how to take data and get the BI, the business intelligence out of that data to make better decisions. I, I hope, I hope all companies agree with that. I could be wrong. But with that, when you start to look at all the disparate technology platforms, you know, accounting that's, you know, on-premise, like Enterprise, QuickBooks Edition, or you have a sales platform for CRM. You know, a lot of the reason that companies, whether they go fully to the cloud or they have sort of the cloud managing the applications that they get served up, is to be able to sort of interconnect that data. So companies, to your point, both you guys, Leanne and Chris, you don't have to go to the full-on Azure Cloud. You don't have to move your files to Azure Files or Azure IAS or Azure or SharePoint. But, but what's most important is how can we interconnect our ecosystems and our businesses so that we can go and start pulling that data out and publishing it in Tableau or Power BI? And so those are where we're winning the deals with customers. Fintech is a great, or finance is a great example. Healthcare, you know, we had a, a big, big healthcare account, um, that we deal with. You guys probably all know who they are across the country, but that was the whole premises. They were trying to integrate their applications by leveraging the cloud to be able to get some business intelligence to provide, uh, kind of a, through their telehealth platform, an ongoing patient care, you know, platform. So they were pulling in their EHRs into it. And all those epic EHRs, all those things are all cloud-based. It's just a matter of how to leverage a cloud to get access to our data and interconnect things. But I hear you. A lot of companies are still, I like the feeling of having it in my back room. And that, that's okay.
Thank you, Sean. Um, hey, Leanne, I did have a question for you. So I know that we, we started working together recently. And you're a new partner to us. So, and I believe that you had some questions. I think it was you that sent over a question about, um, business premium, I believe. Um, maybe that wasn't you.
I don't think that was me.
Okay.
No. Okay.
Go with it.
So, um,
Do, I mean, does anybody understand business premium?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, is that the licenses you're talking about?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Yep. So I think the best representation is frankly just done right through Microsoft's website. But again, I'll just keep it simple. If you have 300 seats or less inside of a customer, they're going to night, 90% of the time fall into a business premium or even a business basic plan. Is the best way I can describe it to you. So in those plans, the only difference is, is you're going from, oh, I guess you could say from having like basic access, access to the Office 365 suite of productivity apps to having like business premium for less than 300 users where you have your whole security component included in. And it's only after you surpass 300 users that you get into these, um, Microsoft 365, you know, uh, enterprise skews. So business premium is what you're going to hear a lot about, I think, uh, going forward.
Awesome. Great. Hey, Sean, I actually have a specific question for you now that you are on here and I always like to pick your brain. Um, I wanted to know, and this is on the study guide, what your description of the total cost of ownership calculator is? The TCO calculator? And, um, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And just, um, how that helps with comparison to like cloud-based services and then on-prem services?
Yeah. So the, the idea behind that is simply to, you know, sort of ingest all of the customers' current, applications that they're using today, from security to Slack and Zoom, I mean, productivity tools. And it, and it takes a really good swag, frankly. I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of like a great CRM tool. It's pulling data from all the other vendors and saying, hey, this is how much on average those guys are charging per month. Here's, here's all the comparable tools. Like I would stop using Sophos or Symantec or Cisco Umbrella or one of these tools and that would be replaced by Microsoft Defender, which is, by the way, part of your M365 suite. So it gives you a total cost of ownership, not only on the pure licensing, um, component, but then it gives you sort of a, and we all hate these, but a soft cost analysis of over, you know, X period of time, you're going to save X amount of dollars because it's much easier to manage overall. That's the way I've always used that TCO calculator.
Awesome. Okay. I feel like we've covered a lot of what we've, like, outlined in the study guide. I will be sending you guys, um, the answers within the study guides. It'll be an updated version. I know that I just sent you guys over the ones with the questions. Um, are there any specific things that you guys saw in there that we didn't go over that you wanted to have answered or, or just talk about?
I may have missed this, but, um, I'm not so sure that I understand the difference between, um, M365 M365 Azure and Dynamics.
Okay.
So. Can you address that?
Yeah, I mean, as best I can, James. So Dynamics, a whole nother can of worms. But as we all know, Dynamics is, for all intents and purposes, Microsoft's mothership name for a product name for all of their finance, sales, you know, the old Microsoft Dynamics, you know, sales, sales tool CRM, if you will, it's for their finance tools. It took what, if you were, if everybody on the phone is old as me, you know, there was Great Plains back in the day and all these Microsoft tools. There was Microsoft CRM. Dynamics encompasses all of those. And you just can pick and choose your modules that you want to build. The flip of that is Microsoft 365 Azure, that came up at the study guide, SD? Yeah, Microsoft 365 Azure. So let me.
For Microsoft Azure.
Yeah, Microsoft Azure is its own entity standalone. You're going to buy it, you know, as a pay-as-you-go monthly or you're going to, and what I mean by that is literally you're going to pay for any data storage. You have any compute power and usage, you have things like that. And then you can change that over into what's called a reserved instance. So what I mean by that is once you buy into Azure, you know, a company is going to dip their toe in the water, spend $39.99 a month on a server. And then Microsoft's going to do some backend calculations with us and say, if, if the heartbeat of that server or the usage stays steady state and you moved it and you prepaid for six months, what's called an RI, you're going to save 40%. So what we try to do with companies is sort of establish that footprint in Azure with them. And then we say, if we feel it's the right fit to move to an RI, because that's where a lot of the big cost savings start to come in. But Azure, the, the misnomer, and I, I say this to the world. I am scared because, you know, you got Amazon, you got Google, you got Microsoft, you got Salesforce, VMware and a few others really competing for our, are basically our lives, you know, that they want all our data. The thing about Azure is that, you know, when you are in Office 365, which 90% of companies are today, you are likely hooked into Azure. So the transition for a customer to say, hey, I'm interested in, I think James asked it earlier, Chris brought it up, you know, I'm interested in a SQL data warehouse, or I'm interested in moving my files to Azure. It's a very simple process because you're actually using Azure through your Active Directory connection, Azure Active Directory, or what's called Azure AD Join. You kind of already have all those identities syncing with the Microsoft Cloud anyway, which is Azure. So that's where I think the general consumer is starting to move more towards Azure is because it's already there.
Think if I can add to that, I think I have very, very high overview of those three different topics, whether it be Office, Microsoft 365, Microsoft Azure. And, you know, Sean, you described Dynamics excellent. Is that, I look at, I try to explain to customers that Microsoft Azure is, it's basically your, your data center in the cloud. That's where all your, your server resources, say, if you would have moved to the cloud, if you were to take your on-premise infrastructure someplace, you're going to take it into Azure. So that's where you've got your server compute. That's where you've got your storage, you know, your cotton cold storage. As opposed to Microsoft 365, those are your, your corporate application entities. That's where your SharePoint resides. That's where Exchange Online resides. That's where your Intune resides. That's what, that's what your off, your M365 licensing gets you. It gets you the Microsoft 365 suite of services. And those services can be broken out into a much, much larger tree. I mean, everything from security to device management to identity management. So those are the three big differences is the M365 is your, your corporate application entities. Again, SharePoint, Exchange, you know, Active Direct, Azure Active Directory. Microsoft Azure is where, like you said, when you're doing a lift and shift from on-premise to the cloud, your server resources, things like your database resources, that all falls within the Microsoft Azure bucket. And then like Sean talked about with Dynamics, that's, that falls into, you know, your Dynamics bucket. So, and that's a high overview, of course, and can be broken into. But I think that really is a, is a, a good way of kind of, you know, talking about that again with your customers or that's what it, a good overview of what it does or what it is.
And one, maybe this will make like really for me, it took me so many years to dumb it down for myself to try to think about it. So I talked about Active Directory earlier, right? Everybody knows that SD gets put in that system. We know she's hired. She's ready to work for us. And then I have to say, okay, what do I want to give SD permission to? So she's got these, she's part of in a unit. She's part of a group. But then, you know, when we go to Outlook or we go to Gmail or we go to some email platform, we go to click on somebody else to schedule a meeting and a calendar invite and all that. So every company has what's called a global address list, a GAL, okay? And so when we did those migrations back one into Office 365 and we had, you know, what's called on-premise syncing with the cloud. We also had to make sure like all of the access between the people that were on the cloud in the real world, not on the cloud, they were all syncing that global address list. And so what we've already done by moving our customers to Office 365 is really move that user base and those identities and really that core of our business to the Azure Cloud. And so moving like what Chris just said, moving beyond that into, you know, the components of Azure, all the way down to the fun stuff like machine learning. I mean, that's, you're already on that path. It's just the customers don't tend to understand it. They think about it as like this, albeit I got to put my files or my storage. You're kind of partially there. So it's, it becomes a really unique conversation. So something to think about when you're having those discussions.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, everyone. We are just about at one o'clock and I want to make sure that we wrap up before one or at least by one, so we can get to our next meetings. Thank you for everyone. Thank you, everyone that participated. Chris, you are so knowledgeable when it comes to this. So thank you. And again, thank you, Sean. We are going to be having another one next week, another study session, and we're going to be tailoring it and kind of changing what we'll be talking about, what we'll be presenting, depending on, again, what we went over with this study session and what you guys want to see moving forward. So if there are things that come up, you know, throughout the week or right after we have this study session that you guys want to send over any suggestions, any topics, we are more than happy to take them. And I'll also be sending over the study guide with the answers, which are very, very high level answers, but things that you can refer to if you have any questions, probably by the end of today.
And I know Express Route was one we, we didn't get to, so maybe we could touch on that one next week, too.
Yeah.
Good point, Dennis. Express Route, I think another one is for everybody is like taking the mystery out of security, specific to Microsoft. If that's what we want to go through. It's been a big, big, big topic because I heard conditional access and information, all that stuff outside of what we all know, which is MFA and password manager tools. Like that would be a really fun topic to make, help people make sense of.
Sean, may I ask you a question after the session?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, James, do you have his email? Do you want me to send it over to you in the chat?
I'll take, I'll take chat.
Sure. Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
It was great, you know, seeing everyone here and hop on. We really appreciate it. We want to do this more. We want to get connected with you guys. We want to help you and support you. So we hope to see you next week.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.